All right, good evening, everybody. Calling to order the Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday, February 4th. Our regularly scheduled meetings this month were the 11th and the 25th. At our last meeting, we decided to have a special meeting tonight that focused on the fiscal year 21 budget. I'm not Brian Shea. I'm Marty Healy. I'm chairing the meeting tonight. I'm the vice chair. Brian has some important personal matters that he had to address tonight, and so unfortunately, he is not able to be here. So what I'm going to do very quickly is sort of set the table for what, at least at the outset, we're going to try to accomplish tonight. We are first going to hear from Brian Ballantyne, who's going to give us an outline of where things currently stand in our budget process for the next fiscal year. Brian's made a presentation to us several times, and hopefully folks watching on TV and department heads and committees have had the opportunity to see all, or at least the important parts of that, with respect to their boards, committees, departments, et cetera. Then I think Mark, you're, Mark Purble, our town administrator, is going to weigh in. Then we opened this up, let the various departments, boards, and committees know that we were going to be considering this tonight, and we're going to give folks an opportunity to weigh in after they've heard some of the detail of the budget. Obviously, we've been through the budget process at the town administrator level. The advisory committee, which has also convened a meeting tonight, has been through with various departments and committees. So in terms of boards and committees, that if folks want to be heard from, we want to hear from you. But we want it very focused, and I'm not going to impose harsh time limits, but I'm going to impose harsh time limits. And I really, it shouldn't take someone more than about five minutes to explain why a particular item or items in their budget are important. Again, most of the budget is covered. Most of what departments, most of what boards and committees have asked for is included in the budget through the vetting process. There are some things that are still on the table, and those are the items that we really want you to address. So I'd like to think it can be done in five minutes. I'm trying to do this in five minutes. And after that, I suspect that the four of us, the four board members, as well as with input and discussion from advisory, will discuss some of what we've heard, where we are in the next year's budget, and hopefully be in the position to, if not make some decisions tonight, although it's my hope that we can make some decisions because the budget clock is ticking, at least move as close to the line as possible. So with that, oh, and I guess the final thing, and I heard some of the advisory committee discussion tonight, it was part of our discussion at our last Board of Selectmen meeting, and that is the question, and this will be part of our discussion with various boards and committees, whether or not it makes sense to think about, particularly with some capital items, putting some items over to a fall town meeting with the idea that the Capital Budget Committee, which did some terrific work for the town of Southborough for decades, and which has been moribund for the last at least several years, whether or not it's time to reinvigorate that and charge them with doing a sprint between sometime in February or at the latest, early March, and a fall town meeting to be able to advise us, the advisory committee, and the rest of the town of Southborough, whether or not it makes sense to do, to take a, maybe a longer capital look than we've been taking. So that's going to be one of the things that I suspect we're going to be talking about tonight as well. So hopefully I didn't miss anything. Any members of the board want to weigh in before we turn things over to Mr. Ballantyne? Brian?
Hello, and good evening. So I'll go through this pretty fast. You've seen the information. You've heard a lot of it before. Not a whole lot of new information here, but I think the main point of, at least, one of the main points to kick things off tonight is the town administrator and myself did, in effect, frame a budget for you to look at. So theoretically, you could look at it tonight and say, yeah, we agree with all of it. That'd be a nice compliment to the town administrator and myself, but you could say that and just vote it. However, you probably want to dive into some smaller segments and pieces of this and go through it. So real, real fast, and I'll go through these slides one by one. Summary of where we were, believe it or not, this all started back in September, earlier every year, and the increases were, as shown here, a little over 9 percent, and schools a little over 3 percent. So you can see they've, ironically, the schools actually went up a little bit, and the town dropped about three-quarters of a percent. So the capital and budget articles totaled about $2 million, and in this current budget, before any holds, I want to be clear, is about 1.4 million. So about $500,000 of that changed in the initial tax rate increase. We know it's high at the start of every budget season, but it was better than last year. Last year was 11 percent. This year was 7 percent, obviously not an acceptable level. So the budget that we have here tonight is 3.46 percent, a fairly measured amount. That's tweaked a little bit because we got some budget numbers. In fact, we've got some yesterday and today, small numbers, not a big deal, but Personnel, Planning Department, Clerk Department, they've all tweaked little figures. Again, it's a snapshot in time. We keep finding these little tweaks, so it keeps fiddling the numbers a little bit. The initial staffing request for the town departments was a little over 6 FTE. This budget has a little over 3 FTE. And the, just to mention the AAA bond rating, that it'll probably be up for review in the fall of 2021. So the FY '22 budget decisions, which is next year, will be where we'll be talking about that in the context of a ratings review. So we certainly have been through several meetings now, and we've tried to get a sense of where the board is for recommendations and support. Clearly, the board would like to, we believe, support Youth and Family and the Police Department for budget requests. Part-time staffing, we also get a sense, I'd like to have, you know, would like to support some of that, too, in certain areas, the no-benefit costs, so that's a little more easier to support financially. And acknowledgement of, you know, the challenge of the five-year plan that we saw that had a significant drop in some of our ability to keep within the levy limit. Until further revenue is identified, we did have that vote the last meeting to, for next year, for FY '22, to not have any new services or hours, so just recapping that. And we know that there's a proposal, I think originated from advisory, to delay some of the capital for a capital planning committee that I believe most people support, at least in theory, and is starting to get a little traction, which is great. I think the advisory committee, from what I've heard and what the town administrator has heard, I don't think we're light-years away in general. I think we're definitely able to, you know, we love to come to an agreement, so we don't have town meeting being a bunch of battles. We've been able to do that the last several years, so I definitely think we can achieve that this year. And further revenue options to be looked at within the next years, because we do want to keep that in mind, and of course, over the next year, I think we're going to have many more in-depth discussions about some of these things of regionalization, donations, pilot payments, or whatever you want to call them, capital planning enhancements, et cetera, et cetera, all those things that we're hoping maybe we can, you know, get a little more funding in here to make things a little easier. The final recommendations are here for the staffing. So we have two part-time in the Youth and Family, one part-time in the Treasurer Collector, one part-time in the MIS, a few hours in the Fire Department, which is about four hours a week. Council on Aging and Library have a few hours, and those are all my benefit, those pieces there. And then the one police officer, since we've heard the, you know, the preference that we really want to try to get public safety a little more supported. So here are some of the changes since the last meeting. Norfolk Agricultural, the assessment, we do have two applicants out there, and we have to carry the transportation and tuition for that, for those two applicants. That may not be needed. Unfortunately, the way the cycle works, we probably won't know if these students are finalized to go or not until after town meeting. Now, if we have a fall town meeting, the good news is we can act on that and possibly address that if we wanted to. So that's something just to keep in mind. The retirement assessment was only $15,000 difference. Unfortunately, it wasn't in our favor. So those two items were about 100, a little over $100,000. The good news is, for the first time in a long time now, I remember, the local aid went up at least more than just $5,000, $10,000, $30,000. It actually went up $101,000 based on the governor's proposal. That's very good news. That helps a lot, and that should be the floor, and hopefully as that local aid moves through the legislative part of the state, that may even go a little higher if we're lucky. So the ambulance fund, we did a little further computation on that, and the chief Achilles in his rate setting this year is making a good amount of difference in the revenue we're bringing in. So we think we can fund half the fire truck debt next year, which is $63,000, so that's a great thing. And the 911 field offset, which is similar, it's a debt offset for the artificial turf there. After speaking with the Recreation Director, he feels that $40,000 can be used towards that. And the Personnel Board revoked their budget. They looked at some of their consulting services, and it was obvious that they could come down on that and still have a little bit of consulting left to do the things that they need to do next year. So we've made out a little bit in these adjustments the last few weeks. That's a good, that's good news. Brought the tax rate down a little bit. The next steps for this board, we hope, is, oops, is to vote something tonight, some budget framework after some discussion. We could vote basically a budget with no capital delay, if the board feels comfortable seeing everything, they want to go ahead with it, or a budget with the capital, we're calling them delays, till a fall town meeting, as, you know, some have suggested, advisory committee seems to be support, or a modification of either of them. Minor budget adjustments will probably be made before the warrant is official, and the easiest example of that is the regional assessment, which we think will go down a little bit further. Now, I put here advisory intends to vote. That is not right. So they're probably not going to vote for another week or two on their final budget recommendations, but they're definitely here to lend some thoughts and any questions you may have for them. So the FY '21 budget with capital delays, the tax rate is, I hate saying the tax rate's 2.34 percent, it's a little misleading, because we know it's not going to be that, or likely not to be that, because we're going to have some capital we're going to put in there. The items that we recommend, and we being the town administrator and myself, are these following items. They're bigger items. They seem to be ones that you'd want to do some reviews on, and the department heads that we've talked to are all fine with them being considered over a longer period of time and in the fall. The other items that are left, a lot of them are smaller items or more general year-to-year items, so we probably wouldn't, at least me and the town administrator, would not probably hold those up, but we can, we can talk about that further. And other considerations, there's some of the other projects that are, you know, Cordova Hall, we know there's some renovation there that's up for discussion, the fire truck, townhouse windows. Townhouse windows is probably an easy one to put off. I would recommend that. Cordova Hall and fire truck is a little more nuanced. There's arguments on either side for some discussion on that, so the board will have to sort of figure out if they want to put those or support putting those off also. And the capital committee, if it is so set up, would review and report back to, obviously, the fall town meeting with the recommendations on any capital delayed. So the levy in this case would be about 3.2 million, 3.275 million after this.
Brian, if I may, why is it so easy to put off the townhouse windows once again? Seems like we've been doing that, you know, for way too many years in a row, and they've been a problem for many years in a row, both in the wintertime and the summertime. Why is that one?
I shouldn't say maybe my wording is easier.
That one should have, should be done, it should have been done years ago. I remember a previous board, it was a three-member board at the time, and, you know, that lost two to one, you know, but, you know, that, why is that so easy, I guess, is the question?
I suppose I'd put it in the context, or at least the way I mean easy, is to get some backing with it, some more consistent backing with it. Seems to be one that draws a lot of discussion, so, but I agree with you as far as, yes, it has been put off, and, you know, I work here every day, and I can say it's a little more annoying than just windows. It goes beyond that. I'm sure the Facilities Director could obviously add to that, but there is a little bit more involved. They're just not just windows. It's, you know, it's a bigger discussion than that. And I think all three of these, quite frankly, could have a, you could have a good argument for moving ahead with them more immediately, so I kind of reserve that for the, some of the advocates that are here to speak to those. So the budget with no capital delays and all this would be 3.46 percent. Staffing is described as earlier, and again, the capital committee would provide recommendations for the capital plan going forward, so they, certainly they have a lot to do if they want to take that on. If supported, obviously by everyone, and we could get that through town meeting, it would be a normal budget process. And the levy in this case would be 2.7 million, so it's a little bit of a difference from the, now, I'm going to go, I have a slightly, very slightly different five-year than you had in your packet because of those few small changes. Doesn't change the reds out. It makes them a little more close to even, so you see 24 and 26, where we're very close to being around the levy. You know, when we get that close with 50 and 60 million dollars, is it going to swing a little bit in either direction? Absolutely. So I look at those reds, that they may be greens next year. Hopefully, they will be. So that's, that includes the staffing that we have. I think, you know, our final thought would be that, you know, the budget that the town administrator and myself, at least, put together for you to discuss and take in fashion in the way you want is just trying to be a little bit measured. You know, we went with the one police officer. We do see the public safety aspect of that and the Youth and Family, but at the same time, not adding full-time people and just trying to have some type of measured budget, since we know that after this year, we're probably going to have to have those freezes and very good discipline going forward to stay out of further trouble. And it'll buy us some time until the capital committee can weigh in, and we figure if some of these capital projects can either be done in a different fashion or done at different timing, and these capital projects in totality, they're big enough where they swing these numbers quite a bit. So if the capital committee comes back and there's a lot of different changes, we could see a lot of different changes here, hopefully in the right direction. So that's, that's where we stand.
Can I ask you to do one thing?
Yes.
I guess maybe two things.
Yep.
Number one, the numbers underneath.
Yep.
Explain what those are.
Yep.
And number two, explain maybe for both the numbers above and the numbers underneath, just generally, particularly looking at two years out in a fiscal year, what we're wrestling with in terms of potential impact on the tax rate.
Sure. So the numbers above of the levy limit, I think you're all familiar with that, so we obviously, as a town, can't spend beyond that except for in cases of overrides. Now, one consideration that the capital committee might want to make is to start advocating that we exclude our debt that we issue at a certain point in time. We used to do that, actually, as a town, and that would make a big difference in these numbers and alleviate the levy restrictions that we are seeing right here. Not so much the tax rate restrictions, but the levy restrictions. So you've got that piece. The numbers below are the change in the levy from year to year, so, you know, you see that big from '21 to '22 due to a lot of capital in that year, that the levy goes down. So each year, oh, well, each year on that, those numbers below, you know, represent each change where, and most of it is capital, so these swings are a lot tied to our capital plan. Some of them we can't do anything about because it's already debt that we've issued, so some of these ups and downs we have to live with. And then you have the tax rate, which is, which is a function of your budget up here that, you know, is basically your ending balance down here, and how much revenue you have to offset that. And, you know, in 20, fiscal '21, which we're doing now, as we said, 3.47 percent, we're estimating with this budget, but in '22, it's probably around 8 percent right now as a budget. And the problem, as I mentioned last time, with that is that that assumes no-no people and assumes these low growth rates for departments, including the schools, for, you know, 3.5 percent or so. So, you know, this, that year, that's why I say we're going to have to be very disciplined across the board, and we haven't seen that in a few years, so it's going to be a little bit different. So that's all I got for now. So it's up to, it's up to you at this point, where you'd like to, if you'd like to tweak things, hear from other people. I know there are some other people here to talk tonight and advocate for certain things.
Well, I think, are there any, before we hear from Mr. Purble, who's on deck, any members of the board want to direct any particular questions to Mr. Ballantyne?
I gave my one, and I'd like to hear more about the windows.
I think we're going to hear from Facilities. We're, well, and before you come up, I just want to, so are there other questions right now for Brian?
Nope.
Okay. There are a number of departments, I may be missing some. I jotted them down quickly. When I, when I walked in, and again, there's not a really, there's not a particularly good way to do this, so this is the way I'm going to do it, at least at the outset. When I walked in, police, fire, facilities, Youth and Family Services, I saw here. If there's somebody else, I saw you walking in. Those are the ones I saw, so I think I want to hear from them first, just in terms of order. Saw Council on Aging, the library was here, Open Space, yes.
Open Space, yes.
Who else did I think I saw? Is there anyone here from Conservation? I know there was some issues about there. There is not. Okay, so why don't we start with Facilities, and we'll put Youth and Family Services on deck. And again, just going back to something I said earlier, and I don't think there's any need for going over, I mean, you're, obviously, there are an awful lot of things in your budget, but Mr. Kalenda's questions and any others specifically we might have, particularly involving capital items that we are thinking about, talking about, putting over at least to a fall town meeting. Fair enough?
Fair enough. Any specific questions?
Falls, why don't you start with the windows?
How easy is it to put off the windows once again?
It's not a matter of easy. It may be a matter of necessity, looking at the numbers. I am a realist. I'm looking at the same numbers you're looking at. If something has to be put off, that would probably be one of the things I would have to say.
At what point, you know, because we've been talking about this for way too many budget cycles.
I would agree.
And you've been advocating for this, I think rightfully so, for quite a while. And if you think that it can be put off, at some point, that has to stop. I mean, these are old, this is an old building, and it's, I understand, is not just the windows, but at what time is this board going to, you know, what time are you going to say it's enough? We put it off, I think it was, what, maybe five, six years ago that we first, you first presented?
When I first came on board, and there was stuff in the works before then.
Yeah. So are you talking one more year? You know, I want to make sure the board's on notice that, you know, this isn't something that can just be, you know, prolonged forever.
Although it's not going to go away, I would feel more comfortable recommending a dollar figure, I believe it was $675,000, if I saw all green blocks up there.
Is there anything that can be done over town, meaning can you do some this coming year, and then some more the next year, and some more the next year, so that it's not one big dollar amount, but you are making progress towards making the updates?
With economies of scale, I would recommend against that.
Okay.
A project like this, you want to do as a whole project.
Is there another dimension to this, though? I mean, can you, for example, make a strong case that it provides a substantial return on investment here in terms of heating costs and so?
Windows do not have a substantial return on investment.
No other way you could look at it.
The return on investment with a window isn't an energy savings. Everyone always thinks that's going to be where your return, it's not. It's more on morale. If you have happy employees who can open a window and feel better about themselves and better about the environment they're in, they tend to become more productive employees. That's where your return comes in a situation like this.
We're not leaking heat substantially out of the current windows.
That is not where your return would be.
So John, let me ask you if, I support having the windows done as well. I think we shouldn't kick too many more things down the road, but, excuse me, would it hinder your process at all if this was held to a fall town meeting to actually give the capital committee an opportunity to have this one of the items that they review as well?
I would have to say if we're going to go to fall, you might as well go to next spring.
Okay. Fair enough.
In reality.
Fair enough.
Okay. But would it, would it help to keep it, you know, at the forefront if it's, if it's looked at at a fall meeting, or do you, would you not care if it waits till the fall meeting?
We can look at it at the fall meeting. I mean, again, Brian, I mean, would it be something we could allocate funds to and we just don't expend until next year?
Yes, yes. This would fall under a borrowing project, so, as you know how they work, you get the authority to do it, but you don't have to do it. That's the nice thing about those, you can hold your authority, actually, you can hold it quite a long time. So.
My fear is, as we get into the red, you know, a project like this should be done, hopefully when, I mean, I would think when we think we have the funds to do it, not when we push it down the road and then all of a sudden we're up against, you know, even worse conditions. Anyway, if you think, if you're telling me that this can and should wait.
It can wait.
Okay.
Till the fall.
Till the fall.
Till the fall. I'm only looking to the fall. I think, I think I'm on the same page with you on that. I think this needs to be done. We've seen time and time again, if proper maintenance on some things hadn't been kicked down the road, then it may have cost a little bit less in the long run.
Right. I was just going to say, pushing it off, too, and, you know, when did we originally start this, about, what was it, $400,000?
Four something, if I recall, back in 2014.
Exactly.
And, you know, years ago, we made a commitment when your facilities fund was created to address buildings and keep them in shape, so either we're going to do it or we're not going to do it.
I support this as well. I mean, it seems to me this may be a candidate for an exclusion consideration. If this is going to actually, you know, create big pressure a couple of years down the road, I'd be interested in looking at that more closely, so.
Once again, I agree with Mr. Staffers.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question across the board. We agree and support the need. The exclusion idea is a good one. I don't want to pile up too many of those, but appreciate.
Me neither.
Appreciate the need. All right?
Most welcome.
Thank you, John.
Okay, I think that's it.
That's it?
I think so, on the facility side, right? That's the only one of the items?
Well, the other item, and I don't know, is Cordova Hall, you know.
Well, I think we're going to.
You're going to listen to the.
Council on Aging on that, yeah.
Okay, so you may be back.
All right.
While Youth and Family Services comes up to the table, you all are next, that question about the windows was sitting in the air, so I skipped over Mr. Purble. I want, want him to, no, no, just going to have him touch base and try to give us some additional context for where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm not going to add too, too much. I think Mr. Ballantyne did a nice job, and I don't want to retread old ground because you've been hearing this for the past three meetings. and I don't wanna retread old ground because you've been hearing this for the past three meetings. Um, I do wanna point out that, um, the chart that Mr. Ballantyne had up showing the green and the red, you gotta remember, and I think Brian did a good job with that based on the chair's question, there's a lot of false green on there, that, you know, it, it keeps us under the levy limit, but at a significant tax increase. Um, and while, um, Mr. Ballantyne is correct that when you're looking at fifteen thousand, sixty thousand dollars, you know, um, that we've gotta drop things down to get them within budget, it's getting it down under the levy limit. We have no choice to avoid an operational override. So it is a little bit different when we're not talking about levy capacity. Um, the only other thing that I will add is, is simply that I think over the past three meetings or so, um, we've tried to get the board to understand where we are in terms of our budget and the ripple effects that, um, this fiscal twenty-one budget, you know, um, will have moving forward. And I, I think, you know, I've spoken with most of you individually, and I, and I think that there is that understanding. That being said, we know that there are needs from the departments. We know there are things that people wanna do. Um, as I've said before, all of the things that people wanna do have merit. Um, it's just a matter of whether or not they, you know, they, they have merit and are affordable. Um, and that is, you know, unfortunately, a decision that, you know, that this board has to ultimately make. Advisory needs to weigh in on. Um, I think the finance team has tried to give you a little bit of a path forward. Um, but I would hope, and I'll echo Mr. Ballantyne's comments, that the board can give us some decision-making tonight. We're really starting to get to the process where the back end, uh, the point in the process where the back end is gonna suffer if we, if the board doesn't start making some decisions in terms of budget book, in terms of finalizing certain pieces. And then if there are some areas where we do differ with advisory, um, we've done tremendously well in the past seven years of going in with pretty similar numbers so that, um, we go in with a unified front. I think it makes it easier for town meeting, certainly makes it easier to defend that budget. So, um, I would suggest that, um, we do what we can tonight, hopefully to get there. And, and that gives us, uh, you know, hopefully enough time to reconcile any differences in the end. So, thank you.
All right. Youth and Family Services, welcome.
Thank you.
Let me, let me try to give you a little context that you may already have.
Okay.
Um, uh, you were here several weeks ago
Mm-hmm.
and made a very effective, I think by all the comments from the board, very effective presentation and, and pitch for what you're, the work you were doing, what your needs were. Um, at the time, I think your request was for two part-time positions. There was some discussion about whether or not it made more sense to do a single FTE, full-time position. What is currently in the proposed budget that was outlined by Mr. Ballantyne is actually your original request.
Right.
Which is the, the two part-time positions. So maybe if, if there's something else you wanna focus on as well, that's great. But, but what the pluses and minuses are of the approach that, again, that you initially requested, the two part-time positions versus the, the one full-time FTE, again, the downside of one FTE is it's got longer-term implications because of benefits and, and other things. So again, welcome. And if you could start off addressing that, it'd be great.
Sure. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your support of our department up to this point. We really appreciated that. Um, yes, our initial budget proposal included two part-time admin assistants. Admin assistance in our department has reached a critical need, for myself especially. We are struggling to, um, keep up just functioning as a department and really need help with, uh, covering the office, um, having people to answer the phone, receive people, um, and help our clinical staff, um, do the jobs that they were hired to do. We requested two part-time admin assistants with the intention of being fiscally responsible, recognizing the constraints of the budget. It was proposed to us, the idea of a full-time admin assistant, and that, in our opinion, would be ideal for continuity's sake. It would be very helpful to our staff. But it also would mean that the person who is the, um, the face of our department when people come in is a consistent person, is somebody that we can count on to help provide some of these services with regard to registering people for our programs, being more responsive. And, um, our board, um, voted on this back in, um, January that they would be in favor of a full-time admin assistant over a part, two-part-time. So that would definitely be more advantageous for us to, to function as a department. Um, and I'm,
Looks like you wanna add in, Sue.
Yes. Um, I'm Sue Budka, and I'm on the board. Um, we just believe that we're the only department that doesn't have an admin. Um, and for what they do, I think that it's very important that there's a face there. And the time that it's been taking the, um, the people of the department to do the admin work, um, and that's not even just seeing a face when you walk in the door, is just taking time away from the residents of Southborough. I just, I really feel like it's, I think I said this last time, it's very important that, um, that they not be alone in the office when they're doing counseling. Um, we, we see an uptake, uptake in mental health issues. I just, the board's very passionate about the fact that we need a full-time admin.
Before I, um, get way in from the other board members, just explain to me in terms of the, of, of actual person, persons in the office, how there'd be a difference between one full-time person, presumably a ballpark forty-hour or so week employee, and two part-time people, presumably who would stagger and would add up to thirty-nine hours? I just wanna understand how, how that would differ.
Sure. The coverage of the office would be the same. Currently, we don't advertise to the public that we have office hours because at any given time, if somebody were to stop by our department, we might be in a meeting with, um, a family elsewhere, or at one of the schools, or meeting with another department. So there's no coverage for our office. We have been taking turns, um, the last couple of years, taking a day to cover the office, so should somebody stop in. Um, so the coverage would be the same. There still could be somebody there to answer phones, receive people, um, respond to, uh, unexpected needs that came up. The difference would definitely be in how this person could support our staff and how we could function as a department. When we fragment the work even more between two people versus one, it makes it, um, it would be more supervision requirements on me, more follow-up, uh, you know, sort of having to decide who's going to be doing what. Um, there's a number of responsibilities, just looking at the, the town's approved job description for an admin assistant. Um, essentially, I do everything that's on there. So if we were to, um, break that up between two people, it would just be a lot harder for our staff to get the level of support and the continuity that, um, would be so incredibly helpful to our department.
All right. I suspect there's gonna be, Mr. Stivers? Looks like you've got a question on your mind.
I got a couple, question, question and comment. Uh, we've been following this for a while, I guess. Um, I, I support the, the full-time. Uh, I remember at one point, Mr. Purple said that he actually had, uh, someone else who was not gonna be taking benefits, so the net benefit change was zero for a full-time here. I don't know if that's still out there or not. But I guess I, I view this department in a lot of ways as a public safety department. And as I listen to the Chief Paulus talk about the kinda calls he's getting more and more of these days, it is things like, uh, domestic disturbances, mental health issues and so forth. And I think we're severely, uh, underprotected if we don't have a, the right kinda staff for particularly walk-in kinda business here. Um, as we've got, uh, again, gaps in coverage down there, you gotta have, gotta have people who are at least moderately skilled in terms of the front door, front desk triage function. I think you can do that much more effectively with one person that you can train intensively and effectively than spreading out that training across two people. And it seems to me that, uh, there is huge benefit in terms of consolidating that function. And if the, if the delta here is benefits, um, I, I urge us to think very seriously about finding a way to make that happen. I strongly support it.
Looks like Mr. Purple is gonna be able to respond to some of that.
So I think with regards to the benefits, obviously, um, you know, there was a, um, a, a benefit that we would, we weren't intending to carry this year, but that we are carrying now. It's twenty-five thousand dollars, so roughly. So it's, it's something else you'd have to fit into the budget.
So that's about the net cost.
Excuse me?
Net cost is about twenty-five for this?
Yes, because we'd have to assume, um, you know, unless Mr. Ballantyne wanted to panic a little bit, we'd have to assume that, you know, that the person is gonna come on and request a family plan. You can't, you know. So we have to, we have to budget, yeah, we have to budget conservatively worst-case scenario. So, um, I think in a perfect world, it would be, you know, um, better to have a full-time employee. But that's a decision the board, you know, the board's gonna have to make. I mean, right now, they don't have anyone. And you're looking at adding two part-time positions, which is why we recommended what we did, which is gonna give them that level of coverage, um, you know, and, and obviously, that's gonna have to be managed.
Uh, Mr. Kalenda?
So I fully support what Mr. Stivers just stated and, and what you ladies are, are suggesting. Um, you know, there's continuity in the office. I think that goes a long way in terms of, uh, you know, customer service, client services. Um, you know, someone coming in, not having to re-explain maybe the same thing to, to someone new and, um, you know. So I, uh, am an advocate for the one full-time position.
Ms. Brashio?
Thank you. Um, I as well see that there, that there's a need, but my concern is what we're looking at in the budget and what we're trying to pull back and, and from my perspective anyway, what I'm trying to do when I look at things is, is now we're, we're looking at adding another twenty-five thousand. We have the chief here who has his officers that are your first responders that are out there, that are seeing these people firsthand on the streets. They're getting the calls for the, for the mental health and whatnot issues. So if I was willing to look at another twenty-five thousand, I would be totally in favor of putting that towards a second officer versus putting it, it toward a benefit position when there's, you're still getting the staffing you need. It's just saving the taxpayer the benefit at this time, which, again, I feel very strongly. I would advocate for putting that, if we can, towards a second officer.
I guess I'll, I'll weigh in finally and, and, um, just say it's why we have a lot of departments and, and, and boards here tonight. I don't think there's anybody up here that, that, A, doesn't think you're doing terrific and important work. Um, and I, when I hear you explain the benefit of having a full-time person as opposed to two part-time, it resonates. It makes an awful lot of sense. Um, that has to overlay with what we're looking at in terms of numbers. So I'm not sure where we're gonna come out, um, but appreciate your laying out what, what the benefit would be of the, uh, the, the one FTE approach versus the two-part-time.
Thank you.
If I may, if I may also, while we're discussing this item, maybe if advisory, we could see what their position on this is?
Um, you know, we're gonna discuss it later. What I prefer to do is, is, is get through the departments, let, let, let folks get out of here, and then we can beat each other up. All right. Um, uh, which chief is gonna win? Whoever gets here first?
Who's armed?
All right, Chief Paulus. And again, I think, and, and Brian can correct me, I, I mean, I, obviously, the focus is, is you requested two full-time positions and, and, um, the budget is currently structured and, and recommended to us as one of those full-time positions. I don't think there's anything else that is any capital items of yours that need to be addressed. So I guess that's the, the focus of what we wanna hear from you.
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
Um, I, I briefed all of you, um, probably ad nauseam at this point. Um, I'll just, uh, bring it up in a, in a public forum. And I'll start off, I'll just cite the year two thousand public safety study. Um, twenty years later, we're not there, where they recommended, uh, one supervisor and two officers on the road. Uh, in fact, we're really not close to being there. Um, we're still operating on, pick your decade, seventies, eighties, nineties staffing models, which are woefully low. Um, at this point, besides the stuff that you see in, you know, Facebook or what's happened recently, um, it's become a safety and a morale issue down at the station. And I'll just chime in, um, Youth and Family Services, sounds like they're doing a great job, and they're serving the local residents. I will point out that stuff you don't see in the log, um, daily. You might just see it as a sister citizen or something like that. But domestic calls, and especially mental health calls, are way up. And that doesn't only include Southborough residents. Uh, we live in an area where there's some, um, large populous cities to our east, um, to our north, uh, besides all the traffic that are coming through. And we have a lot of inter, interaction with those people, and the officers have to deal with it. Um, I think first of all, I need to get the staffing level so the officers responding are safe. They can do their job and provide service unless they're safe at a call or they have enough people to handle the call that they're responding to. For a basic staffing model, I need six offices assigned to each shift. And lastly, um, right now, and I've explained, uh, we're scheduled right now for nineteen offices. We're looking to get the twenty-one to get those six offices assigned per shift. Um, that doesn't include a specialist, which would be myself, the lieutenant, who's absolutely buried with paperwork, and the detective who's extremely busy, especially lately. That model's always short. We're scheduled for nineteen. Uh, unfortunately, in this profession, uh, one person leaves, and it's taking nine to twelve months to do a hiring process, to find a police academy for them, and to get them through their FTO. So, um, you know, we just need to look to the future and, uh, staff us, you know, the way that we should. Uh, I'll also, you know, there's a lot of people that call for different services, and I tell them the staffing that we have on the road, and quite frankly, they're shocked. Um, I'll leave it to you. Um, we'll, we'll do the best we can with whatever we have. But I think the time is, is just right now to move forward. And when I, I came in two thousand and fourteen, I think there was, um, some, some, uh, question, you come from a big department, um, how are you gonna adjust to a small department? And that's been absolutely smooth. I think something that really set me back was sometimes seeing the number of officers on the road that there are. And I think the town's been very good, and I've worked with Mac, and I've worked with Brian to gradually bring that staffing up. Uh, but just the events of the last six months or so just made me realize that I, I just have to bring it to fruition. And, um, hopefully, uh, the town will be able to help us out.
Ms. Brashio?
Thank you. Um, chief, just a couple of things if you could touch on for me. So, and I'm not gonna ask specific to shifts or anything like that. Um, I, I've looked over the scheduling as well. And so there are points in time where there are two officers on during a shift, out patrolling. So let me throw a couple, for instances, at you. If there's an officer that has an arrest, how many officers need to be at the station to book?
Two.
Two. So at that point, our number's zero.
Correct.
Okay. So, um, also, if you have two on a shift and somebody gets sick on a shift and leave, is it safe to assume our number on patrol is less than two?
Yes. We would call and make arrangements to force in somebody as soon as possible. That could take up to an hour or two.
And if, and again, I'm gonna use an instance that, that I had with, with doing a ride-along and seeing how long it could take to get from one side of town to another. Um, Southborough's great. It's a quaint little town, but at the same time, we have the corridor and a lot of traffic that comes through from the, the east and the west as well. So, um, can you touch on if you had three officers, um, on patrol? The, the benefit of that over the instances where you may have two? Just, just so people have a clear understanding of what your officers are facing as far as safety and, um, the need for three?
Sure. If you can just imagine somebody's on, um, Southville Road and somebody pulls over, let's say, a dangerous car stop on Boston Road or Pine Hill Road, what that response time would be? If we had minimum three staffing, then we would staff one in the south, one in the north, and then one in the central. And then the central car would, you know, be able to respond to not only calls, but to back up other offices at both locations.
Thank you. I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Kalenda?
So chief, uh, the town needs, public safety needs, your department needs two full-time individuals, not one. Is that what you're, you're asking?
Correct. To get up to the model that we need, uh, we need two. We need twenty-one full-time offices, eighteen assigned to patrol with three specialists, being myself, the lieutenant, and the detective.
And I'll suggest, this is one of those examples of what happens when you kick a can down the road. So you just, uh, explained to us that how many So you just explained to us that how many years ago did this public safety, that you, 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 the, the report that you identified?
Yeah, 2000.
2000. And we're now 2020. So 20 years, we haven't been properly staffed, right? So at some point, we as a board, the town, should grow tired of not properly staffing public safety. And if that means that the budget goes up because of that, and future budgets go up because of that, because of some, you know, benefit expense that comes with it, I'm confident the town is going to vote for it. I'm confident that at annual town meeting, when public safety shows a need, as you have, for two full-time officers, and when Youth and Family Services expresses a need for one, one full-time individual that they haven't had forever, that the town will overwhelmingly support both of those requests, as do I.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes, thanks. The two officers has been on my high priority list for a while here. Obviously, I share other people's concern about the overall budget impact. I wonder about timing on this one. Is there, if we were to go ahead and support this now, I don't know, Mr. Purple, Mr. Ballantyne, my recollection is that, as the chief mentions, it often takes a fair amount of time to get the right person located, hired, and then through the police academy, at which they operate at a reduced salary for some period of time, et cetera. Have we looked at, at a more detailed view of sort of what's the best case and worst case from a budget standpoint? If you were to go out today, if this approved, and then somebody shows up who's through the academy as of July 1st and is ready to go on the road with no additional training and experienced officers from someplace else? That would be sort of the biggest hit in terms of the budget versus we only find two junior people who need to go through the academy and really aren't fully online until FY '22 or beyond kind of thing. So somewhere in there, there's a range of, of what's more likely, less likely. Do we have a good sense of, of what the best-case scenario is out there if we went ahead now? Is it, is it all going to hit in FY '21? Or more likely FY '22? Not that that's not a real challenge, given the numbers we've seen.
See, the chief's not going to help me on this one, so. I'll go first.
You're on your own?
Yeah, so I, I think that, you know, obviously, the chief was, you know, spoke pretty well about the process. I think in the, in the past several years at least, you know, we find that, that more of the desirable candidates are coming in without academy training. So we're sending them to the academy, which is then, you know, then means that they're gone for an extended period of time. Per the collective bargaining agreement, we are paying them as student officers, so it is less. And then when they do come back and they, you know, go through their road training and they're ready for, ready for work, we're only paying about three to four months, I think, of the full salary, you know, in that fiscal year. So you are starting off a little bit lower, but then, beginning that next fiscal year, you're going to feel the full impact, you know, of that officer. I, I'm not sure whether or not, you know, the chief would be able to find two spots. You know, as he said, it is difficult, you know, to, to get a spot in the academy. We've had to write letters saying, well, you know, if this happens and if this works this way, we'd like to hold a spot, just to get a spot, just in case that, you know, that we do need it. And it, you know, it has turned out that we have needed them. So I don't know the ability to get two spots, that could stagger if we need, have two people that need academy. It could stagger us from getting two people on at the same time.
I guess I, what I'm angling at, I'd like to find a way to actually get us on track to get to the right answer out here in a way that gives us a little bit of cushion, if you will, in terms of budget process, and maybe even to say, you know, we're looking for new recruits who haven't had experience in other towns or whatever, to try to forcibly stretch it out a little bit, but at least to get the commitment in place, get the process started, people identified. So within a couple of years here, we actually have the staffing without having to go through the budget dance next year and the following year, when who knows is what's going to happen. So I'm, I'm interested in that kind of possibility, I guess.
All right, I'll take a final word, and it's, it's going to be a little bit similar to what I said to the folks from Youth and Family Services, and that is it fits, this fits into a, into a broader picture. I will say, I remember quite well the 2000 Public Safety Study. And, I mean, it's interesting. I mean, I don't, I don't want to leave the impression to the folks of Southborough that, that they have not been well-served by their tax dollars over the last 20 years. There was incredible reaction, I wouldn't on the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Selectmen beefed up the staffing, both of the fire department in, in reaction to that study and of the police department. And we now are, and, and that Public Safety Study had, had the optimal recommendation staffing levels. I think we're at that for the fire department. The chief is nodding to me. So we're close for the police department. And there were an awful lot of other recommendations in there that might have saved the town money. And in terms of, it's not the police and fire department's fault, but in terms of regionalization and stuff like that, that unfortunately, in New England, just never gets done. So I don't want to leave the impression that, that, that Southborough has not funded its, its public safety services. I think they really have. So the question now is, we've got a request for two, can we afford it? I don't disagree with you, Mr. Kalenda, that I think the town, with a, with a presentation by the, the chief would probably be inclined to support those positions. But we're talking about tax rate, and I'm very concerned about that. And, and so that's going to factor into, into the decision. So with, I guess, two questions with that in mind. Number one, and it's, it's a follow-up to Mr. Stivers. If there were a, in other words, if you got one this year and one next year, what would, what would the effect be for this next fiscal year? What, how many shifts would be affected by one office, being one officer off of the optimal?
As I explained, unless somebody walks in the door with the academy training, for a service level, you're probably going to see none. So I'm going to have to hire them for September, hopefully find the academy, which I will. If we can approve this at town meeting, I can start a hiring process very early and secure the, the September spots. But then that person goes to the academy in September for six months, and then he comes out and does a 12-week field training, so it's probably next June, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't clear. If you got one position this year, what, you'd be one officer short of the optimal, correct?
Too short on the road.
Well, that, that's my question. The, the optimal number of officers is what?
18 available for patrol.
Okay.
So we're, we're budgeted for 19 right now. We're too short of that. I got one coming out of the academy in a couple of weeks, then I just secured an academy spot. He won't be available for patrol till like next August. And those were really great case scenarios. So I know what you're saying, even if we backfilled with overtime, I'm already too short, and then I already have one in the academy, so you're, you're in the rares all the time trying to chase it. So I would just like to get them appointed and move forward, you know, with a plan to, to get to where we are.
Oh, no, I understand.
Essentially, no matter what you do, whether you give him no officers, one officer or two officers, fiscal '21 is going to look kind of like it does now. Because he is going to have these new officers or no new officers in the academy for the majority of the year. So as he said, things wouldn't look better with one or two officers until June.
And I think that we've discussed maybe cutting some of the overtime budget, and I really won't be able to gauge that till I get these guys out and get them on the road. But this fiscal year coming up, they really won't count towards the overall operation. And it, it's just tough to, to burn people out, you know, on filling third shift. So if third shift is still a guy short, and there's seven days a week, because we're open seven days, 365, so seven times eight, 56 hours a week, you know, backfilling on overtime, it just catches up with you. One person goes out on an injury, a sickness, or whatnot, and you're even further in the hole.
So assume, put, put the, who's in the academy and not. Assume that, that all of that has been cleared up, and you've got your full complement of officers minus one. What does that mean in terms of coverage? In other words, forget, people are out of the academy, people are, are, are ready to be full-time officers, and instead of getting two, you got one. What would that, I, I'm just trying to understand what that would mean in terms of coverage. What would the coverage look like on a 24-hour basis?
I, I stacked the coverage on second and third shift, and then we would run short or backfill with overtime on first shift. But like I said, that, that's-
For one spot?
That's in a perfect world, which hasn't happened since I've been here.
Okay. And, and the final question is, i- is the addition of two additional officers, does that impact the, and I'll reference even the Public Safety Study, does that impact the need for additional supervisory personnel?
In a perfect world, I would love to have a supervisor on each shift, but that's, that's a huge expansion of the budget in itself. Because every time a supervisor takes a day off, you have to backfill it with a supervisor making a good amount of money with overtime. And I know sometimes, some towns go by that model. I recently saw, I won't mention a town, but they're about two towns over, where they were asking for like $120,000 budget appropriation to backfill their, their supervisors. So no, you know, I, I wish we had that, I really do, but I'd just like to get to this. That's where I'd really like to get to.
All right.
One more question, if I may?
Sure.
So it, it's my understanding, just to be sure I'm clear on this, that were you to get two, two additional officers, that represents a, a good expectation for a steady-state staffing at this point, given what we expect looking forward over the next five or 10 years here. And you can't ever predict, you know, crime rates or whatever. On the other hand, my impression is that that would give you the capacity to get reasonable staffing and, and protection for the staff as well in terms of not putting them in dangerous situations, et cetera. So we're not looking at coming back two years later and saying, oops, we need three more people to make this work safely and effectively.
No, and there's even studies that look at the population, and it's about 1.9 per thousand. So if you look, if we're at, you know-
10,000 and change, yeah.
Yeah, really around 11,000. Even when they, when they did those numbers, I don't know how much they accounted for specialists. Like I said, the paperwork's just getting deeper and deeper every year. But that, that's right about where we should be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chief, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Haley, if you don't mind, if I just make a comment to your question, Chelsea Malinowski from Advisory. If the chief was fully staffed minus his one and nobody was in the academy, it'd be 211 shifts a year that would be that last person.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, you agree with that, Chief? It's always nice to have an accountant in the house. All right, thanks. Good evening, Chief, how you doing?
I'm doing very well. As far as the overall general budget, I think, you know, we presented a budget that does what we want to do. I sent a memo earlier this week to explain some of the pressures we're experiencing in FY '20, and they're just going to be exacerbated if the overall budget that I presented isn't funded. We did make some adjustments, and I think it's public knowledge that we removed the deputy fire chief so we could focus on strengthening the current budget. The three items, I think, that are before this committee and the board, four hours additional to the admin, as it doesn't add any benefits. It's really focused on adding more time to a position so that we can expand some of our internal processes and administration. It's also a stopgap. We're not looking to make that a full-time position, so I think with some efficiencies within the organization and some processes with the additional hours, we'll have a, a pretty good, strong presence in that position, and we'll support some of the initiatives that we're trying to do administratively. Two other items, I think, are capital. I'll start with the Lucas device. We are fortunate that, that's, for people in the public, that's a mechanical CPR device. It does a couple of things for us, and we were fortunate to work with the town administrator and finance that we were able to get one this year on a lease program to purchase after July 1st. So that reduced our initial proposal for this from about $40,000 down to about $30,000. These are integral to our success in treating out of a hospital cardiac arrest, and that's a pretty high goal for me. I know it's a high goal for our medical professionals in our area. So I would like to see this maintained in the capital budget at the 30,000 so we can complete the purchase of the, of the one that we have on hand and purchase a second one for our ambulances. The other item, I think, that came up was, for consideration, was the fire truck. We have two fire trucks that are pumpers. Previous administrations and previous select boards consolidated the, the fire stations, reduced the fleet. This is to replace one of only two pumpers that we have. It's getting to the end of its life at 20 years. It takes about a year to build one. The price goes up about 3% to 7% every calendar year. So if this gets delayed, we could see an increase in cost just to get what we would get today between $30,000 and $42,000. And I, I think that would, it's not a good use of the money. The way I attribute it is your roof, your 20-year roof or your 20-year boiler. At some point, you're on borrowed time when you get to that 20 years. You would not replace your 20-year-old roof with 20-year-old shingles or 15-year-old shingles. You wouldn't replace your boiler with a 10-year-old boiler in hopes that it would last. So this is a very critical piece of apparatus. There's many times where it's not in reserve just for second or third calls, but it becomes a primary unit when the first unit is out of service. Mechanical, we just had our newest piece of apparatus out of service for two weeks. That, so the second unit is a primary unit. So I'm advocating for, of course, our overall operating budget, the, the four hours additional for admin, the inclusion of the fire truck replacement in this fiscal year, and also the Lucas device.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions first, and then I'm assuming some other members do as well. Let me, and I'm going to hearken back to the Public Safety Study. Because one of the things that was a big part of that was, it was interesting. I, I can't remember exactly where the people were from that came in and did the study. They weren't from New England. But they were sort of taken aback at how differently things operate in New England as opposed to the rest of the world, or the rest of the country, I guess. And that, that everything was town-based as opposed to county-based and region-based and things like that. And just what you were talking about in terms of, of the, the, the fire truck, where it, because you said a couple of times, it's a, is its primary use, the primary use of that second truck would be as a backup?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering, and again, I don't want to put you on the spot for this, but I'm, I'm curious, because I know it was one of the big pushes or recommendations in the Public Safety Study, was regional coordination for things like that. So that Southborough didn't have a backup, and Westborough had a backup, and Hopkinton had a backup, everybody had a backup, when there were backups 10 miles away, or eight miles away, or five miles away. And I'm just wondering if, if for something like this, if that is a, an initiative that's been undertaken by the departments, yourself, and I haven't been here very long, but in the area, so that, obviously, you know, capital equipment is incredibly important, particularly for something like the, the fire department. And it's incredibly expensive. And whether or not that is an initiative either that has been looked at and has been successful or unsuccessful, or could be thought about for something like this right now, or a little bit down the road?
So we do have mutual aid agreements with our partners, and very strong and very robust. We've got to remember mutual aid is to support the services of another town, not supplant. So much like we go to other communities when they're down pieces of apparatus, they come to us. But other communities are not going to give us a fire truck if our fire, our primary truck's out of service and we need another one, and take the reserve and put it in the first two spot. So I, I think having two is very efficient. Many other communities have more than two that are similar size or smaller than us. So I think I'd commend the work that was done way before me as far as consolidating the fleet and making it a more streamlined fleet so that the capital costs aren't as high. But to only have one in-service pumper, I think, would be inappropriate.
Okay. Ms. Brashio? Yes?
I'm actually set for now, thank you.
Anyone else?
Same here, great, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Stivers?
A couple of comments, if I may. Having been a member of the Advisory Committee for a while and having listened to some of the current conversations on Advisory, also having been in the business world where we buy expensive equipment like this periodically, I think there's some interesting things that, well, maybe not relevant immediately here, but it's worth keeping a- well, maybe not relevant immediately here, but it's worth keeping a strong eye toward the kind of things Mr. Healy mentions, to say, maybe it isn't feasible currently relative to sharing of equipment around. On the other hand, maybe it's interesting to initiate some of those conversations with other towns who are feeling some of the same fiscal pressures, say, can we think of new ways or different ways to be able to share access to equipment like this? Second, I think that when you buy equipment like this, there is often, are often economies relative to a very carefully planned replacement cycle. So, if you've got a piece of equipment that lasts for 20 years, let's say, and you need two of them, it's great to have one that's 10 years old and one that's new kind of thing. I have no idea where you are on that cycle now. But I think this is a case where the discussed capital budget committee might be interested and helpful in terms of weighing in to see what kind of cycle are we on, and are there ways that we might consider sort of getting into the adjustment mode on this versus buying a new truck at this point? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, if I could comment that, this vehicle for replacement needs to be replaced in the next year or two, and it takes about a year to build.
Yep.
It's somewhat unfortunate that the replacement schedule of that offsetting...
Right.
...wasn't done earlier.
Ah.
Because I wouldn't be here asking for a fire truck.
How old is the current, is the other unit?
The other unit is...
Roughly?
A 2017.
So, relatively new.
So, it's relatively new. So, 20 years out from now...
Yep.
...there's going to be some concern about trying to replace them within a two- or three-year cycle.
Yeah.
But I caution holding off replacing this unit for five years or six years so we get in a cycle that we're out 25 years from now replacing vehicles.
And I'm certainly not suggesting that. I guess in my day job, what I would think about, for example, is I'd buy a used piece of equipment that had maybe five or seven years of lifespan left on it. That would then get me into the every 10 years or whatever the right number is.
And to comment on that also is, fire apparatus, when it's used, it's because another department, it's beyond its useful life.
Right.
So, a used fire truck is usually 20 years old, 15 years old, if not older.
Yep.
And unlike your personal vehicle, where you can go get a two- or three-year-old vehicle to make up that time, I caution, strongly caution against purchasing used fire apparatus that is that 15-year-old, or, and if it's 10 years old, there's a problem with it. That's why the other department doesn't have anymore, because remember, these are custom-built. So, it's not like you go to a dealership and buy them off the lot.
Understand.
So, if you're, I would caution about purchasing a used one to get us over hump, because we'll be buying something that will be, end up replacing in a period of time.
And I'm not necessarily pushing that, I'm just saying there are a variety of ways to look at these things. I would hope that maybe the capital budgeting committee could take a hard look at this as well.
You can't lease one to get you over the hump either, is that fair?
You can lease purchase apparatus, and that may be an option, but that's, that has some financial and fiscal...
It's more financing decision, yeah, than acquisition.
But, if I may, I would be concerned if this was reevaluated in the fall, because if it doesn't get support, or we end up putting off the purchase, remember, we don't have to pay for this until it's delivered.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not going to be paying for this for a year. Whether it's bonded...
Right.
...is, I would refer, I would defer to finance, but...
Right.
If this gets put off, we could see an increase in cost that's not, I'm going to be asking you for more money to replace something we could have done this year.
And so, maybe this is an exclusion consideration as well, who knows? So, thank you.
Can I ask one fellow?
Sure.
What is the, how, what is the age of the vehicle you're looking to replace now?
It was purchased in 2001.
Okay, thank you, just so the public at home...
Okay.
...understands what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt if I interject again. Just one other comment to keep in mind as you're thinking about the cycle of fire trucks, is we also have a tower that is essentially offset by these two ladder trucks that were, or the pumpers that we're talking about. So, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at 2030 for when the tower would be up, and that's a more expensive piece of apparatus than the pumper. So, just, I know we're talking about two pumpers, and we're trying to, you know, say every 10 years we should be replacing a pumper, but we're also talking about a decision that was made years ago to consolidate vehicles, and to have two pumpers in a town like South Row is very lean, and, so just keep that in mind.
And I would concur with her about the tower. It's 2010, it's going to be replaced in 2030.
Which is another reason to take a look at the entire equipment spectrum over a longer time period and say, what cycle should we be on here, and how can we begin moving in the right direction there? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, thank you very much. I am going to ask the library to come up. Do you all want to weigh in? I think you did, or not?
Were we hearing from everyone, or just those who have, or there are issues on the budget?
Just issues on the budget, and I think the library did, right? You guys wanted to talk about your, the possible, one of the items that would be pushed off to the fall would be work at the library.
Yeah.
And so, you're weighing in on that?
Yeah, my only hesitation is that we, the board has not been able, the Board of Library Trustees has not been able to convene to confer about the request for deferment. So, I, I'm happy to speak to the issue, I just want to make sure that you're aware that we put this on our agenda in two weeks to get a decision from the entire board. I have two board members who were nice enough to come here tonight, so we just don't have a quorum, and we're not in session.
Let me, let me have Mr. Purple weigh in, if that, for a capital item? If we hear from them in two weeks? Not that your thoughts wouldn't be interesting, but obviously, your board might disagree with you, or have some...
I just want to represent my board.
Yeah, and I understand.
Yeah.
If that's the only issue we're waiting on for two weeks, that's okay, as long as that two-week list doesn't get too long.
It's not going to get longer?
No, I've spoken with, with the facilities director, John Parent, and I, I'm confident that we're, we'll make a recommendation to the board that we, we're pretty much on the same page on. I just think, again, I want them to weigh in and to convey all their concerns and...
We'll see you in, it won't be, we'll see you in three weeks. It'll be the, we're meeting on the 11th, you will not have met by then.
No, we meet the following Tuesday.
We'll meet, we meet again the 11th and then the 25th, so I have a feeling we'll hear from you on the 25th.
I think it's important that we have the trustees discuss this, though, only because the interior carpeting and painting issue has been deferred a number of years. So, I think, sort of to Mr. Calendo's point about the townhouse windows, you know, it's, it seems to keep getting deferred and then coming back. So, I think that's the concern of some board members, and I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Fair enough. Great. See you in a few weeks.
Thank you for coming.
The other two boards that I think we're going to hear from, and if I'm, if there's a third, let me know, or if one of the, is council on aging and open space. Is there anyone else, just in terms of thinking about the order? Okay, council on aging, you folks have been, got here early and have been patient, so... And again, we're focusing again on the capital items. I don't think from an operational standpoint that there are any issues for you folks.
I'll do the initial, please.
Okay. Am I right about that? You don't have any, any issues with the operational budget?
No.
No. So, you were here a few weeks ago, and we talked at length about your proposals for cortical hall, and now one of the suggestions or possibilities is to defer consideration of that through a newly constituted, invigorated capital budget committee, and think about it in the fall. And your reaction to that is?
I think it would be, it would be beneficial.
Wow.
Well, I do.
No, that's great. That's great, it helps us out, so...
Sold.
Sold.
Sold move. A very short presentation.
Great.
But why don't you explain, and obviously, we don't have to take a lot of your time, but explain to us what your thought, thoughts are about that.
Did you want to talk first? We just, I just wanted to reiterate what we were looking for. You guys probably already know, we were looking for the bathrooms and a room off the front of the building. Just to reiterate, things have changed and progressed at the senior center. Space needs have changed. If you've been in the building with a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of people. We have basically two main spaces that we program in, even though we have that really big room, it really, we try to be as flexible as possible with the space that we have, but those rooms that we could program in individually, those programs have expanded. So, we've had to open up those, those walls to accommodate the sizes of the programs, and things like that have changed. So, we've tried to be creative and efficient on how we do it, but the space off the front of the building would give us a lot more flexibility with that. And the demand is, definitely the requests are there. So, there are those two pieces. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear why we were looking for it, and...
Well, I'll just, I will just weigh in quickly, and then any other members who want to. The idea of a, of a, of a capital budget committee is a good one. Again, they, they, you know, when I was on advisory, we worked with them for years, and they were an incredibly effective committee in town. The hope is that they will be that again, and so I think that, that your instincts are good on this, that having the involvement of a, of a committee like that is probably going to be beneficial, and, and maybe make all of us think about things in a way that we haven't up until now, and come up with the best product possible for you folks.
That's why, why I think postponing to the fall, if you do get that capital committee together and can put something concrete together for a fall town meeting, it makes a lot of sense.
Are you volunteering for the committee?
Not really.
Not unless I can have my way.
I would, I would like to ask Mark, right now, two of the three items on our renovation project are within the budget, is that still true?
So, I think it depends on how the project is done. I know that I've talked with Mr. Parent about whether this is done through bid or through ASABET. Obviously, if it's through ASABET, and I think Selectman Healy was the one that brought up the fact that, you know, we're going to have to wait a certain period of time, and then it's going to be two school years before it's done. So, you know, we're talking three, four years before we may see something like this. I think, right now, if we look at doing the work to the exterior of the building that we're talking about, and doing the bathroom work, that work is within the prescribed funding limits.
But, and that's where, that's where the warrant, the proposal stands right now, those two items of the three.
Those two items of the three are within, are within the availability to fund them, and not have to make the, just to finish that, not to make the building fully accessible, which would be millions.
Right.
Right.
We understand that.
Right.
But the council on aging feels that the two of the three should be the bathrooms and the front of the building extension. And the reason for that is, I, we feel that there's a real urgent need now for more space, more urgent than the siding, which is also urgent, just like everybody else's department, everything's urgent. But we just feel, we are the only senior center in this whole area that doesn't have an area where people can come in and sit down and watch a TV, read a newspaper, read a book, socialize, without being right in the thoroughfare between the entrance and getting into the, getting into the hall where the activities are. And if you've been there during lunchtime, you can see, people are sitting at tables, they're trying, people are trying to brush by them. The ADA is concerned to the point where they may suggest that we make one of the tables smaller and take out some chairs so that we can get people through into the hall. That's great, but now we've got less space, and we need more space, not less space. We need places where people can sit and just socialize. We need rooms, a couple of tables where people can get out of the thoroughfare and sit down and enjoy their lunch, and not have people brushing around them, people trying to get around them. So, we feel that although the siding is important, that that could be kick the can down the street. But the other thing is, the way this project is set up right now, if we use ASABET, which seems to make a lot of sense in many ways, that we would not even get started on this project for another year and a half till the fall of '22, and it would be a year or two before we finished it. Maybe we, we vote to get the two renovation items done that we want done, and then a year or two from now, we can go ahead and get the siding done. The siding, some of it isn't, isn't in bad shape, some of it's in despicable shape, but...
John, hire you as a, as a facilities director assistant now, or are you? And I, and I'm just being funny, Bill, but, but I, I mean, I would defer to the facilities director on some of these things for what we do need and don't need on the outsides of the building. I mean, if we lose, if we lose things on the outside of the buildings, then what happens to stuff on the inside?
Well, I, I can't believe that the siding is going to fall off in two or three years, and we're not going to even get to it for two or, we're not even going to get to it because we've got this other stuff, and if we use ASABET for that, it's going to be two or three years before we even get to the siding.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I think what this illustrates is where we started this discussion, is that this should go to this capital committee, because there are a lot of things that need to be looked at and discussed as to how we move forward and how we can move forward, so...
Yeah, which seems to make a lot of sense.
Yeah, but you've seen our presentation, you've seen what we really need in the way of more facilities for our people, and with, each year, it gets more and more needed. And I agree, we just...
Every year, I become more and more supportive.
Yeah.
Very good. We're doing our job. We're doing our job.
Halfway to the hole.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Ms. Gillespie?
Mr. Chairman, this one may have been my request, and in respect to Ms. Gillespie's time, I really don't need a full-blown presentation. I was just inquisitive as to why, in so many of the general government funds, they have been the same for years. You know, town moderator, 75 bucks over years, selectmen salary, same for years, advisory committee for years, for years, open space, and I've supported it, it's always been $1,500. Last year was an anomaly, because there was a request to go to a training session, and it went up to 2,000. So, my only, I had one singular question, why the 2,000 again this year, and not back to the 1,500 like it had been for previous years?
Fair enough. To address that, the...
Well, yes, and I'd like to give the presentation, given the conversation at your meeting discussing our, our budget. There seems to be a misunderstanding of what happened last year. We came in with a request for a $3,000 budget. It was not for one seminar. It was the fact that our commission has been one of your hardest-working, I mean, they're all hardworking, but we have produced significant results in the preservation of open space. We're basically the lowest-funded, and we were spending our own money. It's not really acceptable. Some of the things we did say we spent money on was workshops. Other committees don't have to. Conservation, for example, goes to the MACC conference every year. They have a line item. We have a line item for professional development, and, sorry, my voice is a little shaky, because I'm a little astounded by this, to tell you the truth. We came in with a request for a $3,000 budget. We met with Brian, I met with Bonnie and Brian, Mark. We came down and all agreed that we would make do with 500, to still be one of the lowest-funded committees or commissions in the town. Our $2,000 budget, we thought we would eventually raise it up to a way where we could actually have sufficient funding for a lot of the things we want to do. This year, we decided, we know the budget's tough, we didn't come back asking for a penny more. That 2,000 was not 500 more for one conference. It was 2,000 to try to get us up to where we could do the work we want to do without spending our own money. Last year at 15,000, I mean, 1,500, sorry, wish it was 15,000, we, again, spent money out of our own pockets. There wasn't money left in the budget. We're not extravagant. I just want to flip through this and see if I can get my five minutes.
Well, let me just, and, and I don't, I don't mind the five minutes, but let me just focus you on the discussion, because, and there were a number of members, and Mr. Calendo's right, he questioned not just the, the, the $500 for open space, but a number, and I think, I think Mr. Purple followed up with various departments and boards in asking them to explain various amounts. So, what we're looking, we're discussing is, is very simple. There's, I don't think there's any issue by anyone on the, on the board about $1,500 of your budget. There's, what would the budget look like without, in other words, what does the additional 500 get? I mean, if, if, I'm not going to say you can't go through your, your, your presentation, I just don't think any of us need it. It's just an explanation of what the additional $500 is. And I don't, maybe you don't even like the term additional. What would be the difference between a $1,500 budget and a $2,000 budget in terms of how it'd affect the open space committee?
Okay.
I think that's, am I right, that that's what we're, the answer we're looking for?
Yeah, because I support open space... Yeah, because I support open space and the 1,500.
The point, the point, sorry.
Yeah, please.
The point is, I don't think the Board of Selectmen understand the work that we do and the value we add and what we bring to the town and the, probably, in a given year, tens of thousands of dollars of additional value we supply to the town that other towns are paying for out of pocket. Right now, what we do in Southborough, Lincoln, their pollinator action plan is like $30,000. We're getting this for free because of the work we do as volunteers and the connections we've made and the network we've brought forth. If we go to a workshop and bring it back, the information, right now, you have a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan we're starting to work on. Did you know that the state has grants to implement that? Did you know there's a higher priority for nature-based solutions, that the nature-based solutions are cheaper and more effective in the long run? Did you know that your open space commission is aware of some of these solutions and would be able to help advise how the town can get that money? We have money, we have opportunities to get a $50,000 grant from the state through mass wildlife. We're applying for other grant fundings. So we just keep bringing, 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 and it costs a little money. $2,000 for a year, just.
It's just, again, it's a simple question. What, what is, what is the, what would be the?
Which thing do we cut out?
What would be the? Mr. Kalen, you.
For how long has the budget been 1,500?
It wasn't that long, a couple of years. We had been traditionally, it was like $500. We have been struggling and paying out of pocket over and over and over again. Right now, we have, we have very successful programming, children and adults. We pack the library, the library likes us to present there. I could do it elsewhere somewhat easier, but we bring the crowds in, we're providing services, and the issue. We're in a crisis that this commission is addressing.
It does, it does. I touched. If I may add, well, Freddie's getting her mic fixed, we're looking at a level-funded budget. And it, it went up $500 last year or the year before when the request was for $3,000. So last year, it was 2,000, this year, it's 2,000. I mean, I'm looking at other, others on here as well. I mean, historical's 2,500, how long has historical been 2,500? Dan, that's another one. If, if we're really going to look at these smaller budgets with these groups that are doing really amazing work, then I'll just end up by saying, I, I think it's a justified budget. You certainly have the right to ask questions and I, I appreciate that and I think the taxpayers appreciate that. But when I served on open space, you know, the budget was, I think, $750 at that time. So, and we were paying for things out of our pocket as well, going to, whether it be a seminar or a workshop or just being able to better effectively do our job, the, that we've been tasked to do, is being the facilitators of open space in this town. So I, I thank you for what you're doing. I, I just wanted to chime in on that, so Dan, please continue.
Yeah, and I'll, if, if I'll, I'll just add, so, and again, we don't need to spend a lot of time, I'm supportive of the $1,500 for sure. I've been supportive of every open space budget. Last year, I wasn't because it went up. I know you wanted more and got less of an increase. But, and there are many departments in this town that spend money on their own. We're, we're all volunteers at the end of the day. I mean, we get an incredibly small stipend to be, you know, on this board. The amount of money, I mean, the amount of time and money we all give to our town, it's not only open space that does it, I'm confident that every department does it. I went and looked at all, the, yeah, look at the amount of time the moderator gives doing work for 75 bucks, it's been the same for years. So all I was saying was, open space has done that great work with a $500 budget, a 750, a 1,500. It's been consistently around that, and I recall the, the 1,500 for, for some time. Last year was an anomaly for me. I didn't support that. There are lots of things that we're trying to support, including, you know, youth and family services, police department, fire department. To me, those are the biggest priorities. Open space is a priority as well, but I see public safety and personal safety as a larger priority and I'm trying to make the budget work. And when I see that kind of increase asked for again, I question it like I did all of the others. So I remain supportive of the 1,500 for open space and, and yield to my other members.
Can I, can I finish talking about why the budget went up? First of all, we had had many members on the committee, commission for many years. We have new members. Learning curve, workshops if they go to it, the Mass Land Trust Conference, which we'd like them to go to, but unfortunately, this year and last, you schedule, uh, town meeting's been scheduled. We go to workshops that are free, we go to workshops that we get other people to fund. We're learning because what we're working on now is new. It's not your same old open space protection. What happened is, the availability of land in the town decreased. Price went up. We looked at how we can still, once, can you switch that to one more slide?
No, 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 I really, I.
Okay. I'm sorry, I feel like this has been very hostile towards our commission.
Marty, can I make a comment?
Yeah, Ms. Gillespie, I, I, I really think you should stay.
I support the 2,000.
Yeah, I support.
I don't hear other commissions being talked about the way we were at the last meeting. Making fun of mosquitoes and birds, this is important work.
It's not made fun of, Ms. Gillespie.
It was.
It's not made fun of at all. The request was $500, and I specifically recall, so that commission members could go to a seminar to learn more about mosquitoes, various types of bugs, butterflies. I was not supportive of that in a lean budget last year. I'm not supportive of it in a lean budget this year. I think the open space commission does incredible work and I support them at the $1,500 budget level.
And I'm, I'm going to interject. I think we've, we've, if, if you interpreted that way, I, I apologize for the board. My impression, having been here for the discussions, is that the board is very supportive of open space. I don't think it's a bad thing to have hard questions asked. I think it's a good thing because it gives you the opportunity to justify your work. You've done that. You've done it passionately. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. And I suspect, I can count votes reasonably well, I suspect you're going to get $2,000. So you shouldn't leave here with anything but a smile on your face.
Well, then, let me apologize for jumping the gun. I think it's hard when you are called in and I feel there's a lack of understanding for the work we do.
Fair enough.
And I think maybe it would be wise if we could come in a non-budget time and give a full accounting of what we do and why it's so critically important at this time, given the changeover for what's going on environmentally in our town right now.
And I, I wholeheartedly support that and I would love that type of update for the board. I'd love the, for the town to hear that. I'd love to hear about all the work that was done on invasives and see the progress. This would be an outstanding thing for us and the entire town to look at.
Yeah, and seeing the presentation would be great, just not in the budget context.
What was a five-minute presentation. So I'm going to say, you're all welcome to attend our presentation Thursday at the library, where we'll be working on native seeds, sowing for winter to get rare species of plants more in our landscape, so.
Fair enough.
Marty, can I make a comment?
No. No, go ahead. I thought we were done, Sam.
Thank you, I will anyway. Just a quick comment to reinforce Ms. Brascio. I've actually attended a lot of the open space commission meetings over a number of years here, and I think they did great work for the town. I think that this is one in my book of these quality of life issues. I think there are a few things the town spends money on that gets more leverage out of this kind of money for quality of life. The strong message that you hear from many quarters is, open space is critically important to many people. OSPC has been at the forefront of many, many significant advances there, things like Chestnut Hill Farm, the Community Preservation Act stuff, the golf course, variety of places that dramatically improve the quality of life for residents of Southborough. For $2,000, that's a huge return on investment and I think it's money well spent and I strongly support it. Thank you.
All right. Any other, thanks, Ms. Gillespie.
Thank you, Freddie.
Any other departments that want to weigh in on issues that were, particularly issues that were spotted by Mr. Ballantyne going through the budget? And if I don't see any hands, that's actually a good thing. All right. For those who have left, I can't say thank you, you can see it on the, the, but I appreciate the fact that, that we got so much input. It's incredibly helpful when we're making some pretty tough decisions, so. Do we want to take a five-minute break and then, no, we're all set to charge ahead?
Let's go.
All right.
Let's go.
Advisory, Ms. Cook. What's your budget?
2,000.
It's been the same.
We generally don't spend it. So I thought I'd start out with where I think we are, so you kind of know what our schedule looks like. We haven't voted on anything specifically, but one thing, which I'll tell you in a second because you'll find that relevant. So we're going to meet next Tuesday and I'm hoping we can basically decide on what we think is a tentative, good recommendation to town meeting as far as operating budget. I agree with Mr. Purple, Mr. Ballantyne, I don't think we're far apart. I think there's a few things that we may want to discuss in the future, near future, but I think we're pretty close. The one thing we have voted on tonight that I think you, you would want to know is, we have voted to officially recommend to the town that we do have this special town meeting in the fall. So we voted six, one, six in favor, one against. So we did take that vote tonight.
And, and just, is that with, with a, and I know you and I have discussed it and you've discussed with some other folks, is that with a primary focus on capital items as well as potential zoning issues?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And we took another, we haven't voted officially, but we did take a little straw poll tonight as far as, one of the biggest issues as far as employees. And there is an overwhelming support for two policemen. So there were six people voting, there was one abstention because of recusal. So five voted for two, one voted for one. So there's a pretty broad support to have the two policemen. And I just want to deal with something Mr. Cybert said a minute ago. We have in the past, what I call, done a budget trick, trying to stagger when people start to help the current year budget. It doesn't help future year budgets at all to do that. We don't have a problem right now with the current year budget. So I would not spend any more time talking about when the person's going to start and whether he's going to be a junior or go to the academy. After they get going, we're going to have two full-time salaries added here and that's what's important because we've got a longer-term, we've got a longer-term budget problem, not a short-term one. So it's opposite of what we had the last time we did this in advisory, where we did exactly the same thing. We pushed people off to start January 1st instead of July 1st so that we could fix the current year budget problem. That's not what we have tonight. We've got a long-term budget problem. So I wouldn't spend any more time talking about when somebody starts because it really is the next five years that, that's going to impact in full. So where he starts this coming year is not going to change that. Okay, so going back to why we believe that we should have a special town meeting. We believe that the pending appointment of the capital budget committee is going to include people that have the ability to come back with a very strong, well-thought-out recommendation as far as what we should do for capital, given that we all agree that capital is our problem for the next five years. Everybody says that, so I don't think that's a dispute. That's what they're going to focus on. We can't solve everything in six months, we're going to, we'll still have work to be done, but I do believe that they will come back with recommendations that might change what is proposed right now. One of the biggest things that I think the town's going to have to consider in the next couple of years is whether we should consider closing one of the schools. If we closed a school, it would change a whole lot of things that are proposed here because we'd have a building that we'd be able to use for a lot of things that might make us make different decisions about what's on the fiscal year 21 capital budget. They won't have time to have that done by then. It's not necessarily under their purview to do that, the school committee's going to be have to involve. But we met with the school committee last week and they agreed that the 2013 study needs to be dusted off and looked at again. The building, Woodward's almost paid off, so Woodward would be available to be closed. 2013, it wasn't because we couldn't give up the state reimbursement, but it's two years away from being paid off. So we could close Woodward if we wanted to. Enrollment in the last 10 years, K through eight, is down 300 students, which is a lot. So I don't know what the answer is, but it should be looked at again. So there's just so many things that I think could maybe be done a different way. Tonight, we talked about the town windows. So while you guys were talking, we took a look at what other towns have done as far as windows go. We found many, many towns who have replaced their windows in their town hall with CPA money. So my, Freddie was here and so I asked her, I said, could CPA money do that? She said, absolutely, has to be done historically, but it could. So that's just one thing, they may come back and say, yeah, we should do it, but just use, let's apply to CPA to do it. We took a look at towns and generators and Ayers has used CPA money to do their generator because they had an historic building and doing the generator would, would protect the facade. So that's just, I don't want to get in the weeds with what could be done, but given the time, I think they can come up with some different ways to do things. We haven't looked at leasing very often, so let them look at different ways to buy things. If you've got something that really is more inclined to be leased than purchased, let's, let's look at that. So pretty strong feeling in this group that we really should try to focus on that in these, a special town meeting in the fall. We're not trying to kick the can down the road. We're trying to do this as efficiently and effectively as possible and need the time to do it, given that we now know that our problem over the next five years is capital.
Have you all discussed what capital items you would be in favor of putting on the fall as opposed to the spring town meeting?
Not officially. We've talked about a few that we know should definitely be in spring and decided that we should let Mark and Brian recommend how to split it. And so we saw what we've talked about tonight, so we did not go through, obviously, the road, the road number needs to be in the spring, we've got to have road maintenance money.
Yeah, that's not part of.
Facilities, $100,000. I don't know why you'd postpone that, we're going to do that, right? That's just an annual thing. So anything that's recurring that's on there, I see no reason to postpone, we know we're going to do it, right? The roads, you know, it's a continually open warrant article, so that's not something that would bother me. So the schools did tell us that the Finn generator.
Boiler.
Boiler, sorry. Thank you. The Finn boiler does need to be replaced over the summer because of the school schedule, so that's one that probably can't be postponed. So there's three. Okay, so, in answer to your question, no. And we just know that there's definitely some that will need to go on the, the normal warrant article, but we do think there's several that could be easily postponed.
Okay.
Okay, not deferred, postponed.
So from, from your discussions about the, the operational budget, obviously, one of the things that, that we did, we and the person of, persons of Brian and, and Mark, was to pay very close attention to the effect that decisions in this coming fiscal year will have on upcoming fiscal years. And, I mean, you're absolutely right that the driver, the primary drivers are, you know, important, capital investments that we've made and, and obviously, some that we're going to continue to make. But operational expenditures will have an impact on the tax rate going forward. Now, in, in terms of the youth and family services, we had discussion tonight about two, I, I, maybe I missed it, but I, I didn't hear you, are you in support of a, an FTE position or two part-time?
We haven't voted and I don't want to speak for the committee, there is a lot of sympathy for what they need. If I had to guess, I think we probably would support what they want, which is the one full-time person.
Okay. So in terms of, on the operational side, part of the discussion we've had is, is if we add in additional, it was 6.5 FTEs that were requested? And 3.1 that are in the current budget. So it sounds like you are, you all are at least talking about adding in two additional FTEs.
So let me give you maybe, I still think there's ways to offset this.
That was my, that was my question, have you discussed the, the other side of the ledger? You've got an accountant sitting over there, so I suspect maybe that came up.
So one thing we've talked about for a while now is to take the rec. department salaries and put those through, basically have them paid through with the revolving fund receipts, the rec. revolving fund receipts. And we believe there is enough money to do it. Now, you've got to move the whole thing over, it's not, you can't take apart salary, you've got to put a whole salary over there, including benefits. So we believe there's enough money to be able to do that. The effect of that would be that you wouldn't have the big profit in the revolving fund that we have had for a few years where they would be able to use it for other things. So we do think that should be considered. We haven't voted on it yet. We want to look at the revolving fund, numbers a little bit closer next week to make sure we think this works.
Can I stop you just there and just, what would be the effect of that? And is it, is it, is it doable to fund positions out of the revolving fund like that?
It is doable, but I think it's something that takes some time to look at and, and get everything in place. I, I think, and, and I think Ms. Cook alluded to this at the beginning, there's a lot of things that we need to look at. There's some reorganization things we've talked about. I think there are more 22 discussions than there are 21 discussions at this point in the process. But I, I have spoken, I'm not going to speak for the rec director, but I know that he is more than willing to take a look at this and try to figure out how we can, how we can get from point A to B on this.
That timing's good because 22 is where the crunch really starts to hit, so.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the biggest one. We've got some other things that we think we're going to maybe have, I don't know if we're going to have differences. Mark and Brian know what they are. So, we've got a few things. I don't think they're really worth mentioning tonight unless you really want me to. But that's the biggest one. That would be, I think, $140,000 moved out of the budget over two. So, would pay for second policeman and would pay for going from the two part-times to full-time for youth and family.
Questions for Ms. Cook?
Can I make one more comment before we do questions? I agree that one of the primary responsibilities of this town is to protect the public, no doubt about it. But I also believe that, parallel to that, we've got a fiduciary responsibility to basically keep the tax rate increase at a reasonable level that looks like something like what people's income goes up. Social Security went up 1.6% this year. And so, you know, right now, we are at 3.46. I'm hoping that three goes down to a two before we're over with. We may not get there, but I hope we do because I really do think you got to do, but I don't think they're music exclusive, that we can't just say, "Well, I think everybody would vote for this because it's something we should do." I don't, not sure that's the case. I don't think we know that. But I know a lot of people, they're very concerned about taxes here, too. We hear that a whole lot, too. "I can't, you know, I'm not going to be able to afford to live here if these taxes keep going up." So, I think we've got to work on both. We've got to do what we're responsible to do, but we've got to do it at a cost that lets people be able to pay their real estate taxes comfortably and feel comfortable living here and not worry about where they're going to get the increase from.
Is the 3.46, that's your number, correct?
Yes.
All right, so, but that doesn't include the additional, so would it actually be, we'd be starting with a higher delta?
Well, okay, if we took, if we did that and didn't do the rec, I move them over this year. So, yes, it depends on, you know, what else we do to try to offset it. But I'm an optimist. I always think we can find, find it if we really look hard for it, so.
All right, now, I'll open it up.
Well, I'd be curious if our rec commissioner has any thoughts on that kind of movement.
Tim Davis, Recreation Director. As Mr. Purple alluded to, I think it's going to take a lot of time to really crunch the numbers to see if it's really a doable scenario. The, the immediate thing that pops into my mind is that, yes, we'd be moving, you know, $100-plus thousand from the general fund, you know, into our revolving account, but that money needs to be made up through fees, through everything that we do. So, now, you're, you're asking us to disburse $130,000 over the course of a year, tacked on to programming. So, immediately, what that's going to do is that's going to spike program rates. I will say that currently, what we're doing is we are making an asserted effort to lower program costs right now due to feedback of our community, as we are seeing a, a uptick in scholarship requests and individuals coming in explaining that the prices that we have now are unreachable to some. So, my biggest concern with that is that that money is going to be passed on still to the taxpayer, but it's going to be now, instead of us being the most affordable, you know, full-day camp, Monday to Friday, 200 bucks in town, it's not going to be the case. Our competitive pricing will go up. It will match others in town. That's after-school programs, camps, everything. So, that's my biggest concern, that, you know, we will see a spike in pricing with our programs, which most likely will mean that we will see a decrease in our participation, which then could lead us to a situation where we're not bringing in the revenue that we need to cover it.
So, Tim, we're assuming that we don't have to do that. So, we'll, we'll get with you and look at the numbers closer, but we're assuming, that's not our goal. We think there's enough surplus already there that we can do this, at least with one salary. We don't have to do them both. We could do one and not the other, but we've got to move the whole thing over. So, we can't do a partial salary. But we're not trying to, we don't want to have to increase prices, other than prices that should be increased, which I know you're looking at, too. So, we want you to not think that's what our goal is. Our goal is to just basically use the profit that is in the rap programs to, to fund the salaries for people who also contribute toward running those programs, which both of you do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that because I don't want what you just
So, no, we have no tendency to do that.
described as the, to be the effect of, of, of funding something out of the revolving fund. That's a 180 from what I would like to see happen.
So, we don't either, so no.
Same page, okay.
But even, even so, if I may say, even just with one salary, even if it's the lesser of the two, the, the profits that we make over time, yes, our account's very healthy. I'm the first to admit that, but that's years and years and years and years of building it. So, you know, the profits that we make, you know, over the, the course of our four rap sessions doesn't even equal the salary. So, we're still talking about, even if it's one salary, and again, we have a lot of discussion that we need to do back and forth, and again, crunching the numbers, even just with one of the smaller salary, it would still be a concern of mine that, you know, that one salary is potentially the entire profit that we're making in a year if we're having a strong year. God knows what we're going to have going down the line. So, I think there's still just as a, a concern with that, and it would take, you know, and then I have other concerns, but that's my main one.
Okay. So, I, I, just my observation is, is that what Mr. Purple said a second ago was exactly right, that this is something that for this coming fiscal year doesn't sound like we can be, it can be counted on. It's a little bit longer term than that.
I agree. TBD, let's get the numbers and look at them and make sure that we're talking about the same numbers and we've got all our facts.
Okay. Mr. Stivers, Ms. Bracio? That was easy. Any questions for us?
No. Mr. Purple and I have talked about the schedule, so I think we're on schedule to make sure we get all the votes on the warrant that we can. You know, the, when you look at the non-money articles, they're not bad this year, I don't think, unless something pops up at the last minute, so I don't, okay, so, there you go.
Well, let me ask you this. I actually thought of a question. Actually, didn't think of a question, it's a question. Mr. Stivers mentioned a, a couple of times, I think Mr. Kalenda did as, as well, and it's obviously something that's been done in the past, and that is to fund various capital items outside of the, the, the normal budget means. In other words, to bond them or otherwise. Have you all had discussions about that? Does the advisory committee, if not specifically, more generally, have a view about that? Obviously, that relieves pressure on the levy and the like, but it doesn't
solves one problem, but didn't solve the other problem, so yeah.
It doesn't affect the tax, in fact, it adversely affects the tax rate.
Yeah, so I, again, I'm, you know, we haven't talked about it, so it's, you know, it's hard to, I don't want to make statements that make it sound like we have, but I personally like to keep things inside the, the cap to keep the pressure on the budget, right? So, there, there is a reason to keep things in the cap so that you don't have the ability just to raise the tax rate so high that it doesn't make sense. So, there's pro and con of doing that.
Got it. Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I think the final on the item on the agenda, well, on the public agenda is now for us to thrash through where, and see, I, I know Mr. Shea's not here tonight, but I think we've got enough information, hopefully, to be able to take a final vote. I have a few, just from the discussion, I think, I think we probably have some, we're pretty close to agreement on what we're going to recommend.
Do you want to lead?
Here.
I'm ready to make a motion unless you get one.
Yeah, I mean, there are a few other things I wouldn't mind talking about, actually, that we haven't talked about tonight. Are there other open issues that people want to raise or?
That Mr. Valentine raised that are specific to the budget or?
Specific to the budget, but have not been talked about tonight.
All right, what are they?
A couple of things. One of the things that's been on my list for some time is, is the CONCOM Administrator piece. That is, didn't make the cut tonight. I continue to believe that's a very high priority issue for a part-time position, to allow our, our Conservation Administrator to actually do what she's trained to do and spend a lot more time in the field versus in the office pushing paper. I think we've seen over the last six months, for example, there have been a number of stormwater issues that have been raised, and those are the kind of things that CONCOM, I think, needs to be more actively involved in in the field, and we just don't have the resources to do that, so. Sort of like having the right people, the right skills, doing the right job as opposed to pushing paper. I think, to me at least, that's a very high-return investment, and I'd love to find a way to get that part-time support. I've got another couple of questions about budget numbers in here. I have a question about the assessors budget. It goes up 29K this year. As I understand it from Mr. Spelly's comments in the past, that's related to the revaluation that's happening next year. Is that a one-year expenditure, or so that goes away the following year? Is that the expectation there?
Yeah, there were special regulations put in by the DOR for utility companies this year, and special, at, at first, it was issued with the caveat that the town of Southport might have been able to have it done the following year, but that changed and we got it clarified. So, we're, we're basically, it's a mandate.
Right.
One of those fun unfunded mandates that are put down to us, but you are, bottom line is, you are correct. It should go down.
That is in one year, so that will go down the following, so the part-time position?
Correct. So, we'll get a little.
That's a part-time position or non-benefit position or?
Oh, yeah, you could look at, yeah, offsetting a lot of, yes, yes.
Contract position, okay.
Yeah, contract, yeah.
Second, a question about the EDC budget, which went up like 10 or 11 grand. I mean, that seems to me, again, to be a place that you might think about level funding in a tight budget year. It's not a lot of money, but given what we've talked about tonight, that at least is something on the radar.
Yes, a lot of that funding is due to the downtown initiative and a lot of the programs and printing and other items that they intend to do in association with that.
But I've heard they have a grant for a lot of that stuff, so it's unclear to me exactly how that plays out here, and I would like to understand that better before we.
And this was recently brought up in a wider, I'm sorry, not a wider discussion, but a discussion with, a little bit with the Chair of Advisory, so I know she had some comments on that also. But for now, the town administrator and myself didn't see enough reason to move on it, recommend it.
Okay.
I guess my, my reaction to that is, is that, I mean, the EDC has been here a number of times, and, and, you know, we have expressed support for the downtown initiative. I, I still feel that way. I think what they're trying to do is a very good thing.
I support it as well.
And, and, and I, I think what Mr. Valentine just said is, is correct, that this is not, I don't think we're talking about something that's, for instance, a recurring expense. This is something that is very targeted towards an initiative that is, that, that we're now talking about possibly, hopefully, doing in the, in the fall. And I just think that, that it, the timing would be bad to, to cut out that funding for them as they've, you know, they got the $50,000 grant to, to try to push this ahead. I just think the timing would be very bad and send an unfortunate message.
Yeah, so I'm not suggesting we don't do it, excuse me, but I think that, I've heard that there's another grant that's in the pipeline, so it's not clear to me exactly, you know, what kind of money is out there and can we fund it from some external source as opposed to having it out of the budget.
And could we just get clarification on what it's for, so we know exactly? Because I don't know that we've had that conversation.
The, the $10,000?
Yeah.
Printing, expansion of the shop local campaign, there was a booth, I think they said they wanted to have for an EDC booth for public and business events, handouts, brochures, things of that nature.
Sorry, if you, if you don't mind if I interject.
Sure.
We did receive a memo for EDC, kind of outlining a few things that they were looking for, and my initial reaction was to what Brian just said. It was a, like, we wanted some sort of booth. In my mind, great idea for Boy Scouts to build for them. So, I just, I think we could kind of go through that list and see if there's other ways that we can get what they need without spending the extra $10,000, so.
So, I'll, I'll add, unless we have a guarantee that Boy Scouts have been identified as willing to make booths for people, I mean, we can't, Mr. Purple said it well one time, that we can't make budgets on, you know, hopes or things that aren't, aren't, you know, here. So, I'm, as, as folks may have heard over my nine years, I, I'm fully committed to EDC. I think if anything, we've heard about tonight about unless we identify other revenue sources for the town, I mean, the, the taxpayers are going to be stuck with ever-increasing bills. So, the EDC is, is, I don't, I don't even think they're fully funded where they're at. So, you know, I support the downtown initiative. I agree with Mr. Healy. It would be sending an awful message to try to slash their budget, and they're not even here. Because, you know, I didn't even, I don't know, I, I didn't think this was something that was a hot topic for tonight, and if it's going to be, then, then let's have them come and give their five minutes. But I'm, I'm not looking to slash anything from EDC.
And I'm happy to listen to him as well, and I, I support the downtown initiative also. The other item on my list is, is Mr. Valentine's request for additional admin hours. The Selectman's Office generally has a, you know, reasonably sizable budget here. Are there ways that we could think about reorganizing, restructuring, reallocating work to find capacity to provide that kind of support for you on your part-time basis here without hiring additional part-time position?
This is a broader discussion that the town administrator and myself have touched base with, actually, several times these past few weeks. So, the board knows that we do intend on looking at a limited, I don't know what you'd call it, a limited or a reorganization of some of the town hall positions, or at least looking at them.
Okay.
But that won't be until FY '22. There's various reasons for that, but, but we do intend on doing that. So, again, that may bear fruit as with the discussion with the Recreation Commission.
Okay.
And I think some of those discussions may cut across, you know, elected and appointed offices, which will make it even more fun.
Yep.
You know, to talk about, to talk about some of those collaborations. So, I, there's a couple of things, I think, Sam, that, that may make sense.
Okay, thank you. Those were my additions.
I don't have, I don't have anything other than the items that have been, that were flagged and that we've had a chance to talk about. So, where are we? Mr. Kalenda?
Well, I mean, I remain committed to supporting one full-time for Youth and Family Services, two for the Police Department, and point one for fire.
I think the point one for fire is already in, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, so the two, so the two changes that, based on the discussions tonight where the board is at, seem to be, from what was presented by Mr. Valentine earlier, is instead of the two part-timers for Youth and Family Services, it's one full-time position. Instead of one full-time officer for police, it's two full-time officers for police. Those are the only.
So moved.
On the oper, on the, on the operational side, on the operational.
On the operational side.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
I'll second that. I think we ought to be the board against the Police Department to where they need to be.
So, you seconded it?
I seconded it, yes.
Discussion?
So, just for clarification, it would be the operational budget as presented by the town administrator and the finance director with the addition of the one police officer and the
The benefits.
And the one full-time, okay. All right, I just want to make sure.
So, for discussion, I will just say that, if I may.
Oh, yeah, no, no, absolutely.
I question the part-time, full-time, based on the police officer. If the second officer is included, then I would support the full-time for Youth and Family.
Yeah, so I, I, again, I
They're together.
Two full-time, I think we're on the same page.
We are. That's what I'm saying, is I'm just clarifying that I questioned it, so just saying that I now support it as well.
Right, adding one, making two.
They got it, and I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, that's your motion, Mr. Kalenda, seconded by Mr. Stivers. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you. So that's, I'm sorry. So that's the first half of the sandwich. Second half is obviously talking about this capital piece. I think what we've heard tonight, without putting words in your mouth, is that the board, as well as advisory, is interested in moving forward with reinvigorating this capital planning committee. The question is what items that you're, you know, that we want to defer to the fall? I know there's been some, there were some items that we, you know, we're kind of on the fence about, one being the pumper, another being the townhouse windows. We've heard conversations from the department heads tonight about that. The board's had some comments, so.
I will tell you that my, my reaction to it, and obviously this is, is not a negative reaction to, to any of the pitches that were made and presentations, but I actually think Mr. Ballantyne's recommendation is that I am comfortable with it. And by that presentation, I mean, and included in that are, for delaying to the fall, are the, the items, what page is that of the, you didn't paginate, Mr. Ballantyne?
17.
But it says, it's, the caption at the top is FY '21 Budget with Capital Delays. And there are a number of items listed there, the fire Lucas device, library interior renovations, the townhouse, well, the items listed there, townhouse generator switch, DPW lift, hook, lift truck, DPW diesel pickup, DPW plows, as well as the further consideration. We heard from the Council on Aging that they were fine with delaying the
Yep.
Corderville Hall capital expenditures. That would include the fire truck, and it would also include the townhouse windows. I'm comfortable with putting all of those off to the fall, and I don't think it's an enormous risk to do that, and, and to, to put some faith in a, again, newly constituted capital budget committee that might come up with some creative ways for us to deal with those capital expenditures. So that's what, that's where I am right now, but that, that's not my motion, that's, that's to put it on the table for discussion.
I agree.
I agree.
So my one concern is the pumper, whether or not that should be done now. Hopefully ensure that it not be overlooked in the fall once again, and delayed even further.
I was in, I was in the, pretty much the fence on that, and I had a discussion with the chief, I think it was when the town administrator, I might have been ill at home, but as far as the discussion with the chief and myself went, I pretty much asked him, what's going to change if it's the fall? And, you know, he went through all, the reasoning that I went through with the board, and nothing. He's coming back with the same request in the fall. He doesn't, he's pretty confident, unless I misunderstood, that that is not going to change. So to your point on that one, I'd be a little bit more, that really wasn't my personal recommendation on that one, I was sort of right in the middle on the fence, but that's probably the one I would tip over and say we maybe should move ahead in the, in the March meeting.
Chief, can you give me comfort one way or the other that we are or are not being reckless? If we, and again, my reason for putting it over into the fall isn't because of, I don't think it's going to be done, I don't, that I think you're, you're going to change, but it, but if it can be delayed to the fall, it would, it would fit into what we're trying to do with a broader capital?
And I'm sorry, I didn't make myself clear that, that debt service will be paid out of the AMLOs fund, so it's not a general fund expense.
Oh.
That makes a difference.
That does make it, but anyway, I still ask my question.
Still a big expense that we ought to be very certain about.
I'll reiterate that I'm, I would advise not to put it off to the fall. There's a lot of work that needs to go in getting that designed and specify, the specifications need to be done, and I want to get on it as early as possible. I want to avoid any potential delay in ordering that, so that we don't incur additional costs. In September, if this gets debated and gets put off, then we risk the chance that we're going to have additional costs for the same thing that I would hope gets approved in the spring.
Okay.
So I would move that we approve the capital delays, save the pumper.
And can I?
And I believe, and I say that, save the pumper.
Can I just add something to that, though, Dan?
Yes.
I would like to see the library interior renovations done. That has been on there as long as I've sat on this board. Anybody that goes through there sees those floors and the carpet and the painting. Ryan, maybe you could speak to that, whether that's something that you'd like to see done now, or it's okay to wait? And I know you can't speak for the trustees, but...
Yes, but thank you for calling me up. I, if, if this were delayed, postponed...
Till the fall.
Till, till the fall. I, I would just hope that we could, John and I have discussed this too much, he's, he's had to deal with me a lot in this. We do have a rather large roof project that we had planned for the summer, so that was, that's really a factor, because when the original capital, sort of the initial capital plan was constructed, we didn't know that was going to happen at that time. So what I would really hope is, is that we could get a commitment, if I do make a recommendation to my board, that this could be put at, like, at FY '22 at the latest, I think. But I'm happy to work with advisory and a future capital committee on, on those dates.
Yeah, for both, for both of these, I mean, we're not, it's not a, it's not a trick that's trying to be played to get it from Spring Town Meeting and, and great, we'll kick it over to Fall Town Meeting, and then maybe it'll disappear. It's really to try to get as many things as we can that make sense on the Fall Town Meeting, to give us an opportunity to look at capital spending from a broader, longer-term perspective. I mean, that, that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, and why I asked was, I just didn't know if that was something that if it passed Town Meeting would take place this summer, but clearly that's not the case, so I withdraw that question then.
Okay, thank you, though, for your support.
Hold there just for a second, Ms. Cook?
So the Fall Town Meeting is still fiscal year '21, so we're not trying to punt this to fiscal '22, but that's not why I'm up here. Going back to Chief Achilles, we can't order the new fire truck until July 1st, correct? Right? So if we have the special town meeting in September, we're only talking three months. We're not talking a huge delay here as far as being able to order it. So we just don't think three months is that significant as far as delay goes. But more importantly, we've got an AMLOs that's supposed to be bought next year, and so I don't see how we're going to be paying for the new fire truck out of the AMLOs fund as far as the debt service. So Brian, are you sure it fits?
Yes. Yeah, they, they've had a pretty good increase in their fees, and remember, this pumper would be pushed out, the bond wouldn't be for two years down the road, so we've got a delay.
All right, so I just want to make sure that you've got both things in there, and they fit. Okay?
Chief, quick comment on, on the, it is, it is July 1, or wherever the information comes from, and July 1 to October 1 or so doesn't seem cataclysmic to me, but maybe it is.
And I probably might know the answer to that better than you. If it is, if it is.
No offense.
It's fine. No, it is a bond, so technically with a bond, you can start your projects immediately.
Okay.
They're a little different, because you're not, it's not, you know, it's not an appropriation that you're getting a budget set at July 1st. If you think about it, it kind of makes sense, it's a little, it's a little different.
But the cash doesn't move
Right, right, that you don't have it, right.
Till later.
You going to go with his answer?
I'll defer to my esteemed call.
Trying to help you out.
You did a great job.
All right, then, do you want to repeat your motion one more time, Dan?
So my motion remains to accept the capital delays identified in the presentation for the fall, except the pumper, which would be this March.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Three to one passes. You'll still come to my street, right, Chief?
Slowly, yeah.
Without the pumper.